Okay, we'll get the public hearing part of the the tonight going first. Councillors, this evening we have one item on the public hearing agenda scheduled to begin at 6:30. The purpose of the hearing is for the council to hear input from the public prior to making the decision on the proposal. To the members of the public who have chosen to come this evening, we welcome you. We all welcome you. Everyone that wishes will have an opportunity to be heard. Tonight, council may approve, reject, or defer its decision on the proposal to a later date. Council approval is required for the proposal to proceed. I will now ask the municipal clerk to outline when the public hearing advertisements were published.
So Deputy Warden, a public hearing notice appeared in the September 4th, 11th, and 18th editions of the Vanguard. The notice described the proposal, gave the date, time, and location of this public hearing, and indicated that the proposed application was available to the public.
Okay, councillors, on the public hearing scheduled this evening is a proposal to consider a proposed land use bylaw amendment that would modernize the approach to craft alcohol production in the last you land use bylaw while rezoning 23 Shimada to a light industrial zone. I would now ask Jared Dalzell, I can't pronounce your last name.
Don't worry about it.
Project planner for WSP to present his report.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Can I ask, is it just Roddy in the audience for the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I, this is more or less a recap of the previous presentation I gave. So with your permission, I can give kind of a shortened version of it, just to avoid repetition.
Right on.
Is that a, that was a good to go on that end?
No, yes it is.
Okay, perfect. So, just a quick recap, we're looking at basically enabling a distillery or a light industrial zone at 23 Shimada Pontemara in West Pampico. It's really using the existing buildings there to have the distillery use. And the main kind of distillery itself would be in the rear building there where the pride pointer is. Originally, Roddy and I were discussing having a heavy industrial zone, but really that zone's used much more for very obnoxious uses, and makes a lot more sense for this type of use to be considered under the light industrial zone. As per the previous presentation we had, we changed the motion around a bit. So the mid-maximum production of the distillery would be 150,000 liters annually, and that matches the Class B distillery limits that NSLC administers through the province. And then a number of other uses would also be appropriate and be able to use in the zone. Such as retail activities, event activities, or restaurants. Really things that you kind of expect to be associated with a distillery. And just for reference, it's shown here on the map. The coastal wetland zone is just the portion of the property that is underneath the high watermark, which still remain. And the red area would be the section of the property, or the property itself, that's being looking to rezone to light industrial. And that's just another view of the site plan of the applicant, which is also in the report. So we've done a full review of the evaluative criteria and the missile planning strategy, and that's independent of the staff report. And the policy B8 in the missile planning strategy actually enables this application to proceed forward. The area is really has a mix of uses. And we're looking at kind of how the plan lays out the intent of this area, as well as the policy review. I feel the proposal's appropriate, and it really generally meets the spirit and intent of the missile planning strategy, and we're recommending approval. So really, that's kind of the bar for a rezoning application. If it could be considered a positive approval or not through the existing plan in place. We'll skip through this. Really, just a couple kind of common examples. You see a distillery in the province, one in Ludenburg, one in company distillers in the north end. As mentioned before, we've adhered to the requirements of the government act for the proposal. And we've actually gone above that, and Roddy's put signs on the site just to indicate that there is an application in process. And then I would like to point as well that after the decision of council this evening, assuming it was a positive or a negative approval, there is also a right to appeal, so there's a 14-day period. If it is an approval following the approval notice in the paper that we're putting in the Vanguard, and if it was a refusal, there'd still be a 14-day appeal period following kind of the date of refusal. So in conclusion, we reviewed the proposal, and we feel like the craft distillery with the distillery tasting room, retail, and storage is appropriate. And we're advising to have amendments to the light industrial zone to enable distilleries in that zone. And we reviewed the proposal considering against all the policies of the missile planning strategy. They're generally in conformance with their spirit and intent, and we're recommending approval. So the recommended motion is follows. Let council give a second reading and approve amendments to Land Use Bylaw to a Zone 33 Shimada Pontemara from mixed-use zone to light industrial zone to enable a craft distillery. And also that council could second reading and approve the proposed amendments to Land Use Bylaw as contained in attachment A of the September 20th staff report to prevent craft alcohol production facilities with light industrial use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Does any member of council have questions for staff?
Yes. Just a quick question. When I read that, it says council gives second reading and approve amendments. This is just the second reading. We can't, we can't approve the amendments tonight, can we? Did you get that? Yeah. Because it says it give, give second reading and approve.
Yeah, so it basically, that's to make the differentiation between if you're just going to give second reading to it, you could vote to approve or to proceed or not proceed with the second reading. So the recommendation is that you would proceed with the approval of it with the second reading, which would be following the public hearing here during your regular sitting of council.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I will now open the floor for comments and questions. You mean from the public or? Okay, if not, does any member of staff have any final comments?
I'd just like to say it was a pleasure to work with your staff on this.
Great to hear. Okay, there's no final comments. Jared, anything else you'd like to add on there?
Nope, just the recommendation.
Okay, are there any final questions or comments from municipal councillors?
Thank you, Kelvin, sorry. I'd just like to add that this proposal is in my district, District 9. And I haven't had anybody approach me. I guess the only two people I've talked to about this is Roddy and Justin. Nobody else from the public has, you know, other than just mentioning, hey, you know, what's, what are they doing, blah, blah, blah. That's about all I've had. Never had anybody, you know, ask me, you know, really much about it. I don't know about you, councillor Diggan, but.
No, no, I have nothing asking about it other than favorable comments is what I've heard from it. And the only, sorry, were you finished?
Yeah, go ahead.
The only thing I was going to ask Jared, I believe his name, is just, just wondering how long you've been working on this file. I'm just more so looking to get a timeline as to how long it took to get to where we are tonight.
Did you hear that, Jared?
Yeah, I think I began in, at the end of July. So it's around either end of July, beginning of August is when I picked it up.
Okay, so we're just looking a month and a half or so, two months to get where we are tonight. Yeah, good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Diggan. Okay, that concludes tonight's public hearing. Thank you very much. I, I believe if I've got this right, and Alan, I know you're online to, just to be, so I'm sure here, we'll be voting on this later on in the agenda when we begin.
Yes, yes, so the public hearing would close at your, at your approval, and then the meeting would open, and on the meeting agenda is the option for council to approve or not. I mean, the recommendation's clearly to approve.
Very good, I just want to clarify that. Okay, very good, then the public hearing now is terminated, and we'll go to the meeting and start the, start our regular council meeting. Okay, call the meeting to order and the approval of the agenda.
Can I?
Yes.
Just one thing that I wanted to add, and it has to do with a request that I've had through the Legion in Westport, and it has to do with planting some tulips. So if you want to put that on. I, I'm not sure if we need a decision tonight, but I know they need a decision soon because what, whatever's going to happen has to happen at this fall. Anyway, I'll put it on the, you can put it, ask for a decision if you want, under nine F.
Nine F, very good. We'll put.
It's, it's a, it's a request from, from the Legion.
Request from Legion, oh. Sorry, thank you.
I'd also like to add, I guess, an update on the, on the Beafan di Sea kayak and Timbuktu. I guess while it's fresh in my head.
Sure.
And you can put that wherever, I guess, either.
Nine G.
Work for me.
Good, for you. Any other additions? Okay, before I move, we have a motion on the, on the floor to accept the agenda as with the additions, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Any conflict of interest? None that I can see. Lucia has sent us, councillor Lucia LeBlanc has sent his regrets, just to add that on. Okay, there's no presentations. We have the number four, the adoptions of the minutes. EMO Planning Committee meeting, June the 5th. Your mover.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under my nay, motion carried. B, we have the regular council meeting of September the 10th. Can we get a mover on that?
So moves.
Move.
Second.
And second? I'll let Lori figure out who it was. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under my nay, motion carried. For C, we have our municipal recreation commission meeting minutes.
So move.
For move and seconded, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under my nay, motion carried. Business arising from the, from the minutes. We have five A, which is dangerous or unsightly, unsightly policy. And we had this at the, at our, at our last meeting, and we had instructed our CAO with some recommendations to change some of the items. If I could ask Alan if he could maybe take this over, if he wouldn't mind?
Sure, can you hear me okay, first of all?
Yeah.
Yes.
And say it's really nice to see you, junior.
Thank you, nice to be here.
Very nice to see you. It's, it's really, I can't see you from close, but I can see you. It's nice to see you.
Thank you, very, very good to be here.
Yeah, it's excellent. So this, this dangerous and slightly policy, first of all, highlighted in yellow is the amendments that we first discussed at the previous meeting. Highlighted in blue would be my response to what I heard through the discussion. So just to summarize the discussion, there were a couple of items that were raised. One was that we do have the requirement to have a form of transition for properties that we've either dealt with in the past or continue to deal with. So there was the, the, there was a request to make it a little bit different for those properties that we have already cleaned up that still have a receivable on, on the books, that there was a desire to, to look at those different. So, so, so I attempted to, to make those changes. The other thing in, whether I heard it directly or indirectly, what I considered or gathered in some of these adjustments is the fact that a dangerous cleanup may be interpreted as different as an unsightly cleanup. Dangerous cleanups can happen due to involuntary dispositions of property. So somebody could have a fire, and they can't afford to, you know, clean the rest of it up. So that's, that to me, there's a lot of potential for it to be a different scenario than an unsightly situation, which is generally caused, not entirely, but generally caused by action or inaction of the, of the owner. And it's more, it's arguably more intentional, or has the potential to be more intentional. So, and I say that without judgment. So, so there's two, there's two aspects around that is, one is, okay, well, if it's dangerous, what are we, what are we willing to, to, to do for relief? And if it's unsightly, what are we willing to do? And what are we willing to do for those properties that preexisted this policy? So in, in brief, in short, I would say that the first thing is, is that what this, the policy changes have are, how they're showing now is that the TLC relief, now remember, the relief fund is the grant, not the loan. TLC relief fund is the grant. It, it, it will not be available for any cleanup done prior to September 30th, 2019. So there will be no grant associated with a, with a, with an unsightly, sorry, yes, with an unsightly cleanup, okay? Dangerous still could qualify as a, for that TLC loan. Sorry, TLC grant. So just, I know it's, there's a lot of words and it's kind of confusing. So, so in short, the dangerous is entitled to both regardless of when it happened. So if we did a dangerous cleanup, and it happened last year or last month, they would be entitled to both the loan and the grant component of the policy. An unsightly would still qualify, keeping in mind that they have to qualify, they have to be an eligible taxpayer. They have to be eligible to, there has to be reasons. It's not everybody that would qualify. But if they qualified and they would have an unsightly cleanup prior to September, they would not be entitled to the grant component. They would only be entitled to the loan component. Okay, so that's the major difference between the first draft and the second. And there is provisions at the very end of the policy that say that if the municipality has outstanding balances for property cleanup performed prior to September 30th, the properties will only be entitled to a relief grant as outlined based on dangerous property. An unsightly cleanup would still, would still potentially qualify for a grant. The grant is far less. The grant is limited to $1,000. So, so I'm, I'm taking you step by step here, but essentially, the most that they could get is $1,000 if they had an unsightly pre-September. And the other item that was added was that if the properties have been cleaned prior to September and are still found to be unsightly as of November 30th, then there will be zero eligibility for any grant. So that is to encourage those that have an unsightly situation, that they've recreated, either intentionally or unintentionally, that they have a period of time to clean it up in order to qualify for the, for the grant that is limited to $1,000. So that's, that's treating the unsightly different than the dangerous. And moving forward, what it would also do is anything past September, they, they would qualify potentially for, for the grant. Now, there's, there's no way for us to the difficulty with those cleanups that we're doing, let's say, in two months' time, is that it's possible that they would have a grant that would be applied to their property, but then six months later, the property become unsightly again. There is no second crack at the, at this relief fund or to the loan. It's a one-time tool. So what would essentially occur if they had been considered to be unsightly and were forced to clean it, or that we entered the property and forcibly cleaned it more specifically, is that the, it's, it's possible that the entire amount would become pale, and the clock would tick for the two-year period. So that would be, that would include the previous and the current. So that's the intention of the policy. Those are the changes that I'm presenting to you. I, I would prefer to defer, I'm suggesting this to council, obviously you can, you could pass this in three seconds, but I would recommend that you consider these changes and debate or discuss. And then what I would do is, is, is bring it to our provincial advisors as well as our legal counsel in order to make sure that the wording is appropriate. So, but I won't do that before I know that I'm on the right track with council.
Yes, we have a question from councillor Donaldson.
Yes, on, on the situation where we do a first fund cleanup, could there be a grace period of so, so many months in the policy before they would even apply for a grant and the loan? Because it wouldn't actually be a crunch to them until the next year's taxes come out if they didn't qualify to the loan and the grant. To see if they're going to maintain their property in a slightly manner instead of an unsightly manner. Because I hate to give out a loan and a grant.
I think I heard you appropriately. We can certainly put in some wording around dates and deadlines that will both hold staff accountable to doing it in those periods, but also hold the taxpayer accountable. The reality of the situation is it's a process in and of itself. So if, if you want a cleanup to occur, it doesn't just, just occur. Oftentimes, we, we have the hopes that the resident will do it on their own. But in the unlikely event that we actually have to clean up forcibly, by the time we get the bills and we set up the billing and do all that, there is a period of time. So, so there would be that section of the delay. But then we can give them a certain amount of months clearance before, before providing the grant component. That is possible. So go in, let's say, for instance, two, three months down the road, and see before actually issuing the loan and the grant, see that there's been no considerable change in the property. We can absolutely put that in the policy.
Yes, councillor Diggan?
Thank you. Just wondering if there's still a clause, I thought, I thought, maybe it wasn't even in these, this one here that we're working on or that you people are working on, where if there was something of value on the land of over $500 that the municipality could actually sell it and keep that money?
Yes.
Is it still in this new?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's, I'm just finding the section for you, councillor.
I was just missing this.
Section 5.5 on page seven.
Perfect.
5.5.
Page seven, right.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions from councillors?
I'll make a suggestion. You can't make a motion, I mean defer it to another meeting. Is that what you would like?
I'm sorry.
A recommendation to defer this to the next meeting or future meeting?
Yes, if council's satisfied with, with the intentions and the revisions, then that's, yeah, it would be appropriate to do that. Then I'll take it through the, the legal.
Very, very good, then we'll be on consensus that he, that our CAO follows up on and sees to the, to the people, our solicitors, and be sure this is all proper language and everything. And probably like councillor Donaldson said about the grace period, you know, that would be added on. I think we're all in, in agreement with that, so, okay, very good. Yeah, we'll keep on.
I'd second councillor Donaldson.
Do we need a motion?
No, it's just a recommendation.
Just a recommendation.
Oh, you made a mo, okay, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the unsightly vessel in Westport. We are, we are tabled this next meeting. We're waiting for any information, some more information to come in. Five C bilingual road sign, that will also be tabled for the next meeting. The, the work is in progress.
Well, I.
Oh, okay, do you, do you have something?
Yes, I have something.
Go ahead, yes.
I have contacted the Caped, I contacted the, who I thought was president, but he's no longer president. He had to, to step down, and they were having a meeting, I guess the board was having a meeting last night. And they, they will set up a time when we can meet. She was going to bring it out. I talked to Sally, and Sally said she would bring it up, and they would set up a, a time when we could meet with their board. So I hadn't heard back from her, but apparently, she said they were having a meeting yes, last night, so. So when we know more, then we can, we can arrange to have a meeting when it's convenient for, for both groups.
Great, thank you, Warden News, for that update. I, yeah, I appreciate that. Okay, any other comments on that part? Okay, five, we'll go to five D, Department of Transportation Infrastructure, special meeting. Our CAO has sent, or the staff has sent a, a letter request for that, and we haven't had a response as of yet. So we're still waiting for a response. So under six A, it's the financials up till the end of August. Marsha is not here at the moment. Alan, would you take any questions if there are any on that part, okay?
Yeah.
Would you like to make a, kind of a high-level look at it? Do you have stuff, place to, things you can read up, up there?
Yeah, I, I definitely do have that.
Okay, great.
So, Marsha sent her regrets. So the operating fund surplus at the end of August is expected or anticipated to be about 108,800, most of which relates to our surplus and not the surpluses of West Pampico surplus, Tuscan surplus, or Middle East Pampico. So those essentially even themselves out, plus and minus, so the, so about 113,000 of the 108 is, relates to the operations. So that's driven by a variety of items. One in particular, which will be, you know, a huge surprise to all of you, is the D transfer tax. The T transfer tax is 20,000 higher than the appropriate budget. So what happened last year, we budgeted a little bit more aggressively, not, well, we didn't, we didn't budget as conservatively as we usually do. And so, and so it was very close to, it was actually below budget last year. So we dropped the budget, and we're having so far a very, very big year for, for D transfer taxes. So we're up by 20,000 there. So there, so, but most of the differences are actually in expenses that have not occurred yet or, or are recurring. Either, either they're not occurring or they're occurring slower than we expected. So one of which is garbage collection disposal, we're 11,700 ahead there, as well as dangerous and unsightly premises currently showing a zero expense. That will not be the case by the end of the year. However, nothing expended in that line I have just yet. Fire protection is, is also showing a $14,000 surplus. And again, most of that is timing of training as well as timing of purchase of equipment. So I don't expect that 14,000 to be 14,000 at the end of the year. I expect it to be closer to 5,000 or, or less even. So that surplus or that savings is going to, is going to be reduced over time. The biggest number is the sewage collection and disposal of West Pampico in terms of expenses, but that is offset by revenue. So the West Pampico budgeted the construction of a building to house Rosie and her truck, and we've been having quite a bit of technical difficulties with the truck. And so we're not going to invest heavily in, in an asset to protect a vehicle if we're not confident the vehicle can do what we're expecting it to do. So that, that work is ongoing. It is, we've essentially, we've had some hard conversations with the, with the supplier of the, of the, of the truck, and I believe this week they are doing last, you know, their last bit of testing to make sure that they, that they have it right, and that it can work for us. But we'll ultimately have to be the judge of that. Finally, just recreation and active living is slightly ahead of, of budget as well as the Tuscan courthouse and museum. Most of that is, is timing differences. So it is still early in the year, so it is a surplus. And I, typically when we have a surplus at August, it usually, it usually holds for the year. The only, the only one other thing I'd like to mention is Marsha and myself are planning on changing the way that we present financial information to council. changing the way that we present financial information to counsel. We're finding that we're telling you the same thing every month and so, and we're not necessarily, uh, uh, giving you the full picture around some of the reserves every month. So what we're, we would like to do with, and I'll leave this with you, i- if you think that it's, it's a, it's a good idea, is, is to do a quarterly financial report, you will get it monthly because we have to prepare a monthly report for our staff. So you will get it monthly, you will have the information in your inbox if you require it. However, uh, the presentation for approval to budget will be, will go from monthly to quarterly and it will include capital reserve activity, operating reserve activity and the balance sheet of all of your funds, so. And finally, there'll be a, uh, a discussion and analysis, so if you're not comfortable reading the numbers, what I'm talking, like what, what Marsha and I do and explain the variances, that will be explained in writing. So you'll be able to, uh, quickly figure out why variances look the way that they do. So, so for, for those of you who are less comfortable with reading the numbers, there'll be a narrative attached to it. So that's where we're headed, uh, just, and I, we think it's a tremendous improvement, we hope that you would, you would agree. And that's the end of that.
Thank you, Alaa. Any questions on the, the presentation by Alaa, anybody has any questions or?
The only, the only thing I often wondered is why they give a financial report every month. Like really there's, I don't think there's a need of it, like I believe quarterly, like he's proposing, would work well, you know? Yeah.
With the extra details and that, that they're planning to give.
Exactly.
I think it'll, it'll be better myself also, I truly believe that.
And we, we know if we have any questions as counselors, truly, in the meantime, that we can always approach Alaa, you know, and he will get the answers for us, so.
You got it.
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
Great. Could I have a, we'll, we'll vote on the approval of the financial report, if you mover?
Slow.
Move seconded, moving seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, we have the com, on six B, the comparison report, attachment in one page. Alaa, would you like to speak on that?
Just that it's early, what we'll be doing and we'll be including this information, uh, as part of your quarterly reports moving forward. Uh, but it's early, it, the receivables do, do look higher compared to last year, but it's driven by a, a, a variety of factors, most of which is the water lending program that's driving some of the receivables up, uh, which we, we know is a long-term, uh, repayable period, so it's difficult to compare apples to apples, but again, it's, it's early and, um, statements have been issued to taxpayers who have still not paid their taxes and so that typically generates some, some activity on the receivables.
Right on, there was gonna be a question I had was why are we, or what, what is the reason why this is higher, okay.
There, there is another reason and, 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 I mean, the, the reality is, is particularly, this is particularly true to, uh, for West Palmico and Eelbrook, um, that, that the area rates have increased, so it's, it's not just, uh, you're not, you're also not comparing the same, uh, bill. So those bills went up, I mean, all bills went up because the, 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 the rate has gone up by two cents, so invariably, if, if you're going to defer your payments on, on taxes, you're, and you, and you're doing it exactly the same way as you did before, logically the receivables will be higher because the tax revenue is higher. However, uh, particularly in Eelbrook and West Palmico where the area rate is, has changed drastically, that that, um, if people are paying their bills in the same rhythm, then that would leave some more on the table receivable.
Right on, I understand that, very good. Any questions on the, on this report, anybody have anything? If not, uh, this one, I don't believe we do a motion, do we, on this one?
Not typically.
Not typically, I didn't, no.
In the future, it'll all be in that big report.
Okay. Right on. Okay, we'll move to strategic priority topics, there's nothing on that one. No add-on to that, uh, number eight, grant allocation and approval. So there's the two thousand nineteen fall grants organization, we have one attachment. And we have, I guess, uh, the numbers that the average of the counselors, what we sent in as recommended, uh, the, the grant, grant, uh, numbers, I guess, amounts. And, uh, we're actually looking at this, we, there are seventy-five hundred dollars that's, can be allotted and we're, I see here we're at sixty-four hundred. So we, we can leave it at that, we can boost it up, uh, this is up to, uh, up to counsel, it's certainly not as a, it's not a, a, uh, number that's written in stone, we can, instead of sixty-four hundred, we do have seventy-five hundred. I don't know if there's anything to add on with the communities in Bloom or, or not, uh. Anyhow, any, any comments, any, do you have any comments on this, yes, Ward News?
Well, I, I'm, just, just, my personal feeling is, you know, we had seventy-five hundred, we've got, uh, grants that are, that are, uh, cut back, you know? And we have eleven hundred dollars there that we could probably up some of the grants, you know, so that, uh, some of the grants could have been a little, a little more.
Any suggestions on any?
Well.
Well, the Argos Farmers Market asked for a thousand, we put, the average is nine hundred, why don't you just give them a thousand?
Thousand.
Let's bump it up a hundred, there, Farmers Market.
And then the Zami's sat on, sorry.
No, go ahead.
That's fifteen and that's three hundred dollars that could be added to that.
Exactly.
And the Patchwork Pals, I think we should give them to them, they, they help the communities a lot, so I think they should get the full amount.
And Patchwork Pals, that's two, an extra two fifty.
So how much have we got left?
Patchwork, let me just add up here.
And Village Friends.
Yeah, I would give them.
Village Friends.
So you're up to four, six fifty, you're here, six fifty.
You're five hundred on Village Friends. Seven, eight.
Three.
Eleven fifty.
Now, I have a question with the communities in Bloom. Looking at their budget, they had us down on their budget for ten thousand. Did we ever?
It's a great point.
Did we ever come up, they had, it listed in their budget, they had us down, they had the, the Municipality of Yarmouth in, in, as ten and then they had, uh, but that was part of their planning budget, it must have been, because I don't remember them coming to us asking for, asking for funds. They asked us, I think they came at one point asking us for maybe a letter of support or something, I can't remember for sure. So, it's just that the amount that they're asking, if we're gonna give you something, I think the amount that they're asking for doesn't really fit our, our fall grant, uh, you know, for sure.
Take the whole budget?
You know, and then some.
You've been giving to that.
And, and maybe, I, I was just wondering if there's any other way, if we were going to support them, if there's any other way that we, any other funding, uh, uh, method that we could use, if we are gonna fund them.
It starts tomorrow.
Oh, it starts tomorrow, I know, I know.
It starts tomorrow?
Oh, yes.
We don't have this tonight.
It's this weekend, yes. I mean, it, it's kind of, uh, when you look at an ask, the asset they have, and we'll give them three hundred, I think that's, uh.
That's an insult.
It's better, it's better not, to me, you know, but I'm not saying we shouldn't support them, I'm asking if there's any other way that we could support them.
C E O, would you have some comments?
I may inform counsel on, uh, correspondence that we did receive, uh, back in, I, I don't remember the exact date, it would have been January, February, twenty nineteen. We would have received an email from, uh, one of the organizers asking for Argos support.
Okay.
Uh, on this event. Um, our response to that was, please submit a formal application for grants to organizations. Um, and, and the deadline came and went and, and we did not, we did not receive an application now. Uh, the, one of the gentlemen in the organizing committee, uh, indicated that, uh, that it was possible that it was submitted and we didn't, we didn't receive it. Um, I tried to clarify how they submitted it, I, I don't have that information. So, so, uh, if the, if the, if they would have submitted the grants to organizations at the time, then you obviously would have considered it among all the other assets that, that were received, uh, at that time. So it's unfortunate, I don't know, uh, if there is a, a miscommunication, I can't confirm that, and if there was, I don't know where it came from. But I do, I can, I can confirm that we did receive a, a request to be considered back in, in January. But we typically, when we typically get those, uh, requests, we typically defer them to the, to the grants to organizations, uh, grant, uh, application, uh, process. So, I just wanted to be clear that that happens, uh, the other thing is the, the budget, um, the budget presumes a, uh, a surplus of approximately, I think it's ten thousand dollars.
Little over.
So I think they budgeted conservatively and, you know, like they may or may not reach the amount of attendees that they had budgeted. So, um, I don't, I don't know, uh, typically in those kinds of events, there's not, there's not a, a net income. Uh, there's usually a break even and obviously, in order to break even, you require grants from, from municipal units to do that. So I'm not, I'm not sure, I have not clarified why the budget still remains a surplus. I wish I could give you a bit more information there, uh, but, but that's what I have from the staff.
Thank you, thank you, Alaa. So I guess at, at this point, what is the wish of counsel? Certainly have the numbers, uh, that Counselor Book gave us and it comes to eleven hundred dollars. With communities in Bloom with three hundred dollars. It's up to counsel which way we wanna proceed.
Three hundred dollar paper speaks loudly one way or another, if that was the way we wanna look at it. Whether you wanna support it in another way or whether you just don't wanna support it at all, so how do you take that number? That's a tough one, right?
Right.
So I don't know, I would suggest we drop, drop the three hundred out of there for now until we get more clarification on how this event went and if there's a shortfall, maybe we can help it. But I mean, it's just been, sounds like, based on what Alan says, been this confusion there somewhere and I'm sure we'd have had all the right information and, and we would have probably supported it in some way or another, but I mean, when you got a seventy-five hundred dollar fall grant program and you got, what is there, ten?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yes, ten thousand asked and you got six, how many, eight, eight, eight organizations, nine organizations asking for a little bit of that?
That pot.
That pot, right, I mean, it's, yeah, so I'd say we drop the three hundred out of there for now and, and deal with it at a next meeting when we know more of what's going on.
And, and I think this should be, this should be notified of what, of what has happened as well, like, you know what I mean? Just, just not, not just say, no, we're not going to support it, I, you know, they are doing some activities in the, in the municipality as well.
This was my question I had.
Yes, they are.
I didn't know that, this was a question I had, is there anything going on in our municipality?
Yes, there is, well, is there anything going on? They're bringing, as far as I know, they're bringing them to the village, they're bringing them to Westport, uh, they're talking about maybe the, uh, the boat tours, the Tuscan island tours and, you know, that type of thing, so I'm not sure. There is, there.
Some spinoff.
There is a bit of spinoff, this is, this is, uh, an anniversary, it's the first time that a small town like Yarmouth has had the community, not just Yarmouth, the, the small community has had this, uh, symposium, so I don't know. I, I just felt like we should probably be supporting them in some way, it's just that when I see the app, when I saw the ask, I said, there's no way, I mean, I can't, I can't see it justified.
We usually get a presentation when we have an ask, it's big.
Well, that's it, exactly.
And I think that's why it kinda slipped under the radar, we didn't, we didn't have a presentation, so.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Do we know if any of the other, you in this have contributed?
I don't know, we don't know that, because when I saw, I thought maybe it would say who, who had contributed, right? But it, it shows that Municipality of Yarmouth was ten, the, the, ours was ten, which I knew, but we, we had also have the appropriate as well.
The term was sixty.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept this, uh, this, uh, I saw almost it spring, fall grants program with additions that we, we've added here and drop the, the Yarmouth Community and Bloom's associations until we, to a future meeting, until we have more information.
So does that mean that we've got an extra three hundred dollars to play with now?
We'll spend it sometime during the year.
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
Because I think we brought pretty much everybody up to, to, to one.
We have eleven hundred dollars, it's certainly named, we've, we've added a hundred dollars to the Farmers Market.
Yep.
We've added three hundred dollars to the Zami's sat on, we've added two hundred dollars to Patchwork Pals and five hundred dollars to Village Friends, it comes to eleven hundred dollars. So, and we're dropping the three hundred, that's.
So we're at seventy-two then?
Very good, Calvin, yes.
So do we have a?
Would there be any bump up somewhere that you see?
Are you interested to use that three hundred dollars now and make it seventy-five hundred or?
Well, if there is, I'd put it on the Jupiter House. Two hundred of it in now.
Two hundred on the Jupiter House?
Yeah.
To bump it up? I really believe that's a great.
Another hundred dollars left.
Sarah Corney.
Yeah.
Put it on Sarah.
Sarah Corney, the other hundred.
Is the mover on in favor of that?
Very good.
Who's seconded?
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay, seconded.
Making sure that was included in your prior motion and, yeah.
Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm very minded, Nate, motion carried. Thank you very much for that, healthy discussion. We told, we told we had given that chair to Junior.
So just, just to clarify, cause, um.
Yes.
He isn't a hundred percent, so were to revisit the ask for the communities in Bloom is what I'm hearing, getting more information around the participation and then coming back to council for decision?
You're absolutely right, Alaa, what we'll do is, prior to the next meeting, if you, you or Lori or staff, I should say staff, I guess could get the information, bring it to us at our next meeting, the beginning of the next month and, uh, yeah, I, I, we'll, we'll go from there.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
And it may be irrelevant, cause there may not be a shortfall.
There might be, yeah, exactly.
Great point. Okay, for decision, the MPS L U B review recommendations to award. This is attachment, there's the, uh, Municipal Planning Strategy and Last Land Use Bylaw Review. Proposed, the, the evaluation is, was on our attachment, W S P made a proposal of, uh, forty thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and they're number one in the ranking, we had Upland, Upland at forty-one, seven fourteen, they were number two. Stan Tech was forty-three, three ninety-one, number three, and Phantom Studio at forty, oh-six-nine was number four due to some of the, uh, some of the stuff they had missing on their proposal. So based on that, I guess, uh, the recommendations from, uh, the, uh, Public Works is that, uh, we accept, uh, the, uh, W S P, uh, bid. There's no question.
That would be the recommendation of the office of C E O as well.
Very good, thank you, Alaa, for that.
I'll move, I'll move that we, uh, accept W S P.
Both are moved.
Second?
Seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm very minded, Nate, motion carried. Next item, uh, it's the second reading land use bylaw amendment. There's, uh, that attachment of twelve pages and another attachment of thirteen pages. We've already had the presentation from Jared and, uh, so if it's, there's any questions on this? If not, we can move, have a mover and a seconded. Let you look at it first to be sure you've, yeah, we'll give you a few minutes to look at it.
There's a recommended motion.
Is it there?
Yeah, I thought the ball, it's, it's down partway. Page one.
Thank you.
Oh, on page one.
Page one, yeah.
Got it, yeah, thank you. Unless you read that first before anybody makes a move. Unless you read that first before anybody makes a move.
It was after a year.
It was, you're right.
You wanna make that motion?
Yeah, really.
So moved, seconded.
Second.
By Councilor Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under my name, motion carried. Roddy, you're all set. Congratulations. Yeah.
Good luck.
No, no brainer. Yeah. Okay, next item is the Nakheel Board appointment, member appointment and there's a letter here from the Nakheel Board Chair. On September eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, the Nakheel Board of Directors elected Jill Saret from the Argos to the Nakheel Board to fill a vacancy on the board. As per Nakheel bylaws, new directors to the board must be approved by the municipality. Therefore, the purpose of this letter is to request council's approval for Jill Saret to be the Board of Directors, to be on the Board of Directors of Nakheel Hall for special cash. So moved by, uh, sorry, question?
Comment, yeah. She come see me. She wanted to know all kinds of information. And she wanted to be briefed on what the meetings were like and I told her that she had the financial background and she has empathy as, as well as anybody. And I encouraged her to accept it. So if the board members here don't mind, I'll make that motion.
Sure.
Hold me on second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under my name, motion carried. Award of Tuscan New Road Construction and Sewer Extension. You have an attachment of one page. And this is the proposed road sewer construction that will form the road next to our new administration building. As we see here, the public bid process, we received four bids. Aberdeen Paving was a hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars plus HST was the number one ranking. We had Garian Construction at two hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty, number two. Number three, Dexter Construction, three hundred and seventy, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars even, number three, of course. Atlantic Road Construction and Vaping at number four, five hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars plus HST. They have compared all the prices in lump sum in line to the cost estimate from Able Engineering and did not find any discrepancies. Based on the results, the lowest bill bidder, we would recommend awarding the project to Aberdeen Paving. Any questions on this? Everybody may have. We then request a mover. So moved, so moved. So moved by Councilor Albright, seconded.
I'll second that.
Seconded that by Councilor Digtin. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under my name, motion carried. Application letter for support Clare Argos Employment Services. May I, or Muse to maybe comment on this?
Um, the, the employment center from, from Sedanet in Tuscan and, and Clare, they have, they have to, to apply for funding to keep that going. And when they get their funding, it's good for three years. It's due for the application now. And what they're asking for, it's, it's, they're not asking for any, any monetary contributions. They're asking for a letter of support, that we support that type of center in our municipality. And I guess the more support they can have, the better it is for their application. So that's basically what I'm, what they're asking for. I've already discussed that or I've sent the email to our C A O. So I guess
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. I, I can make recommend, I can make a motion that we send a letter of support.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under my name, motion carried. Okay, correspond, uh, sorry. Nine F, request from the Legion.
Oh, that's me as well.
Yeah.
I've, I was contacted a while back by the Legion that it's the seventh fifth anniversary of Second World War. And what they're wanting to do is plant some tulips, seventy-five tulips in, in various areas. Not just, not just in this area, but across, across Canada, I guess. Tulips will be, will be supplied. And what they're asking for, they're asking if it's okay, if they can plant that at our, at the monument here in Tuscan. I'm pointing this way. It's probably that way. And one thing they're asking for is if staff, we have, we have maintenance staff, if they could prepare the plot for them to put. They would probably plant the, the group would plant the tulip, but they're wondering if, or the veterans would probably. But they're wondering if our staff would prepare a, a, a plot for them to put that in there. So I guess we can't decide that. That's, 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 it's a staff issue, you know, we can't, we can't ask staff to do that. But they wanted me to bring that up to see if, if that could be done.
Uh, I guess I can ask the C A O if our staff, you know, they know they mow lawns and stuff like that. I don't want to be and prepare plots of land for flower beds or you'd have to hire or, I'm sure just, we could ask the C A O to look and check this out.
Yeah, we will certainly follow up with that request and, and figure out exactly what it, what's required and I'd like to, I'd like to talk to Wayne about what it means and, and around maintenance, et cetera, and all that. So, yeah, yeah, no, I, we're happy to do that on behalf of council if that's the will of council.
And like I said, it's, this, this would have to be done. Tulips apparently are planted in the fall. So the bulbs are having to go into the ground this year. That's why they, you know.
Before the first frost.
Pardon me?
Usually it's before the first frost.
Yes, exactly. But it, like I said, as far as I know, everything will be supplied. The, the veterans will be definitely involved in whatever. So, but it's approached by a veteran as well. So, anyway.
Okay. It, it, it sounds like a positive thing and I'll, so what I can do is I can, if I can get the contact information and go direct and if that's the will of council, we'll, we'll make it happen. I mean, the fall is a better time of year to, to organize these type of one-off situations. Obviously, it's not as hectic as the summer. I guess, I just, you know, I, I don't know enough about the maintenance of that to, to comment. But we'll get that information if that's what council wishes.
Yeah.
Should we, we should have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Digtin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Under my name, motion carried. So I guess that gives you the okay to check with staff and find out, you know, how do we move forward with this, if it's possible.
Yeah.
Thank you, Allah. Thank you, Danny.
I personally hope that we can move forward with it and think it's a great thing.
Yes.
You know, really, when you think back and you see these veterans, November the eleventh and all that, I
Mm-hmm, a hundred percent.
Okay, we'll move to nine G and Counselor Doctor Moats of Kayaking.
Just an update on the sea kayaking symposium. Took place the weekend of the, I think of the date now, it's about thirteen, fourteenth, I do believe, not the past weekend, the one before. I've got some numbers here. Ninety-four registered participants, thirty-one coaches, so that's a hundred and twenty-five people who were involved. We had the community supper, community dinner supper. We had two hundred and two tickets sold to that, okay? So most, if not all, the participants and the coaches were there. And then plus public, I know that Ward and Muse and Counselor Donaldson were there also. It was a great turnout. It was a really, really good night. All these expenses, the big expenses are in, they're not all the small ones. So we, we don't know exactly, but the, the two groups should split twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars. So it was split in two. It was the ladies auxiliary of the West Pumiko Fire Department that catered along with the group from the Glenwood Community Hall. So, so it was a collaboration between those two. It was held at the Legion. So the Legion, you know, made money also with the rental and the bar. The bar seemed to be a little busy. So I guess the, some of the kayakers were probably thirsty from being on the water all day. So. I'm just trying to, what else? Got some other numbers here. I'm just going through my
Little bit of salt there might give you thirst.
Also, the, and the, at the symposium, at the, our, the old Argos, which was held there, I guess another one of our businesses. They had a silent auction, all kinds of things that were donated by kayaking, you know, companies and stuff. So it was silent auction and so people there bid, the, the participants, and there is three thousand dollars. And the three thousand dollars, that's what they wanna do with that money is to start a kayaking courses here in this area to encourage young people from the area to take it up. You know, so this is kind of part of the symposium and kind of the, the legacy that they wanna leave behind. And Chris Lockyer was joking about the age of the sea kayakers, which is, you know, if you, I guess averaged it out, is, you know, a little bit higher every year that they come. So they like to have younger sea kayakers. So that's something that they've incorporated this year. So. So all in all, it was a great night. I'm just trying to see if I'm, I probably forgot something. But anyway, that's my report on the, on the Bay of Fundy Sea Kayaking Symposium. The next one is in two thousand and twenty-one, every two years. And the dates, remember, September eleventh, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or something like that. Something to look forward to in two years. So, great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Doctor Moats. Great. As I was going to work, must have been Friday morning. I met, it's gotta be at least half a dozen cars with two, three kayaks on top of trucks, cars, going probably to the Indian Soos Bridge. More than likely, it did. Every year we see them there. So very early and they were on the go.
Yeah, I guess the locations were Kamus Hill to go to Tuscan was a, a hotspot. I'm sure that Counselor Murphy seen them go by. Kapo Shin Yarmouth, Cape Sable Island, I think Danielhead Beach, and then the, the bridge, the old bridge in Glenwood in Argos. And then right at the lodge. So they were, they were everywhere. They were everywhere.
Thank you, Counselor Doctor. That's great. Okay, we'll move to number ten. Correspondents and for information, Nakheel Housing Corporation Financial Statement. Under B, we have the Municipality of Pariton Proposed Amendments to the MPS and L U B Land Use Bylaw for Cannabis Production and Processing. And C, we have Western Counties Regional Library Board Minutes. And and D, Multi Newsletter de Courant. And there's attachments. If anybody would like to read that, the people out in the audience, certainly it's on our, on our, on our site. Eleven financial requests or none. Okay, number twelve, any notice of motion from counselors or topics for our next meeting? If not, we want your question period. Anything from our people in the audience? Scott, would you have anything that came on? We've got nothing there. Okay, so would there be a motion to go in camera?
Motion to go in camera.
Camera, seconded. All those in favor?